To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, send our congratulations for a win, please.
I will do that.
I see no public for public discussion, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated April fourth?
Um, on the minutes, I have, let me get this here.
There's the wrong vote?
No, um, just the wording on, uh, let me get to that. For the stuff with EMS on, um, I don't know which page it would be on.
Um, let's see, EMS would be.
It's one last thing.
So there's, there was multiple motions, cause we wanted to split everything out.
Yeah.
Which it was good and fine, but on the one for vacation, it says to allow EMS employees to carry over up to forty hours. On the next one for comp time, it says to allow up to fifty-six hours to be reimbursed by the city. And we're not just gonna give them fifty-six hours, so I think we should specify it's to carry over.
I'll have to look at how the motion was where.
I asked Melissa about that yesterday, and she said it wasn't said that way, but I don't think that conveys our intent, so.
So like maybe an ex, well, how?
What's, what?
Just because, I mean, we're not, we're not giving them fifty-six hours just because they're coming over. It's whatever they have on the books, and that's what we were discussing.
She's got up to fifty-six, right?
Yeah, but, and then adding to carry over for the handbook after that, but we're, eh, just for clarification purposes.
Well, the handbook would apply.
But they, we would be allowing them to carry it over from the city, we just don't have the carry over words in the first part of that, is my point.
So if I, how do you want me to change, how would you like me to change that?
If you added, like, motion to allow EMS employees to carry over up to.
But is that what the motion says though? Cause I have to put in here what the motion says that you made. So I can't change what you said in the meeting, I can do a clarification afterwards. But if your motion actually said, didn't say that, then that's not what I should be putting in here, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I can do a clarification afterwards, but I can't change your motion.
I think that would be. Yeah, and I'm, it, I don't think it makes any material difference, it's just the, um, yeah, the language, but so that it's clear for how it.
I can listen to the motion to, to make sure that I put what you guys said in the meeting and then.
I did, I just know we were talking about allowing them to carry over some, so I think it's, I think our intent was clear from the conversation, but, um, I don't know the exact words that were used.
I will verify what you said in the, um, in the motion, and then, um, if, if, if what I put is what you said, then I'll just add a clarification afterwards. If it says to carry over, then I will change it, if that's okay?
Works with me, I just think we should spell that out similar to the other one above it.
Okay.
Okay, but then the, everything in the handbook applies to the, so the forty instead of fifty-six in hand?
No, fifty-six in hand.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah, so all, all the like material details in the minutes were fine, I didn't, it was just to carry over, cause we're not pulling it out of thin air, this is my point. It's just whatever they have on the books, and I, I don't think anyone would challenge it, I just think clarification purposes.
Okay, I can do that.
So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
With these changes?
With a clarification on carry over.
So moved.
Mr. Stecker, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Wacker, any more discussion?
Says handwritten claims, do we have any credit cards or anything?
Um, the, the three, no, the three handwritten claims that we have on, for today?
Yeah.
We, we got them on the agenda a little bit.
Yeah, those are.
Yeah, that's, that's separate.
Fly them later.
No credit cards today?
Yeah, we will have.
I thought it was just one handwritten claim for sheriff's department.
We have three.
Three.
Okay.
No, but the, the credit cards have been coming in after the fact the last few, last few weeks.
Yeah, we don't have any claims today.
Have a motion to approve the agenda minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried unanimous. Secondary road foreman?
Good morning.
Good morning.
See you out fixing the road, uh, shoulders on A forty-two yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, another field trying to reclaim something before the grass starts growing. See where we get done. Reclaiming some gravel. Anything in the back? Sure, with us or, or that going on, just trying to get things straightened up, roads straightened up pretty decent, they're coming together. I don't know, frost is all the way out, but they're coming together.
We're putting waterways in upstate Keister with the dozer. Frost.
Yeah.
You've got six inches, it's solid frost.
Yeah. Did you go, did you bust through it, how deep was it?
It's rotten, but I mean, it's, yeah, you gotta spread it out and let it,
Yep.
go out before you can do anything, though. I was kinda surprised.
Well, Brian Diggs raised, and it's a spotty deal, one place is nothing, next place is a ten inch.
How are some of the, um, rock approaches on like the four-way bridge or the big six one? Any of them hold up?
We're getting deep track in Philly, you can hit it with the, at the B pick, probably mob and stuff that works pretty good. So, uh, this week after I worked at them, but last week you get them again, so.
Okay.
Getting all the gravel roads in shape.
Pretty much, I mean, they're, they're, like I said, they're planning shoulders and stuff, and that's, and trying to get anything covered and stuff like that taken care of. So, but, just time.
Till they get tore up.
Yeah. Time.
Traffic will be out there here pretty soon.
I see this ferret running up and down the road, so that's coming.
Yeah. I drove through about, what, fourteen miles of gravel the other day with a truck. I didn't wanna go down the black道 with a dozer on. Cause they find something wrong, I'm pretty sure.
Well, them guys, huh?
And they were in pretty decent shape. When they stop, do they expect all the lights to work?
It's involved, it's gotta work.
It's spring, you know, stuff goes to pot over winter.
Worked and put it away, why should they work anything out?
How's the equipment holding up with our shortages in the mechanic's office?
It's a challenge. We got, we're down dump trucks, couple maintainers. When, we do have breakdowns, it just takes that much longer to get it repaired, but it's a challenge right now.
However, since they put regenerators and DEF on, trucks just aren't the same.
It's an issue. Well, you're just, just air compressors, tanks, valves in the tanks. It just, it just takes long, and we, we typically, when we, when we repair, we like to get everything repaired, so. If you find an air leak, you may end up not just replacing one hose, but try to get everything repaired. Right now, air conditioning units, I don't know how many. We're finding our compressors are not working this every year.
That's why they're showing up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that takes a while too, to get out, get, get our freon loaded, um, everything else, so. Still have studies to maintain and to remember that issue.
There's two more, two of the north, and I'll do some of the further. But, I mean, just kinda have breakdowns when they're on, you know, that, you know, and challenging getting fixed up.
We used to have cranks on the windows and didn't have air conditioning.
But she was having a hammer too.
Open eye and chill up on the maintainers, let the dust roll in.
And we plug the filters now.
Yeah, and then, and then create another issue.
Well, they're starting to find tile holes out in the fields, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, bitches, doing, hell of a lot doing locates on and stuff, cause we're trying to get the roads prepped and decent. I'm not gonna pull the guys off to go start fixing tiles right now.
Yeah.
So I was waiting to do locates and maybe start on the next week, do locates this week, start on the next week.
Yeah, it, there's, there's no hurry in there.
There's holes, there's holes out there.
Yeah.
Do you take care of that Josh Murr?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it after bed.
Okay.
It's actually Mr. Stecker's district now.
Oh, okay.
But he'll take care of it, he wanted it fixed yesterday.
Well, he talked like he'd do it himself, so that's why.
Then he said he couldn't dig it deep, and he couldn't go down that deep.
Well, that's why when I heard it was ten, eleven feet deep, I talked to those guys.
Yeah.
Is it in the road ditch?
No, this field.
Okay. It's an old clay tile, twenty-four inch.
Yeah, they'll get it fixed.
Anything for us? Well, thank you guys for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one, guys.
You too.
K R C H, we are up to.
K R A C.
H C, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know how I got C H in there, Center Health?
The rest of us don't know either.
It works, I can respond to just about everything. Just about, just about, not quite maybe. So as you can see, our volumes are up in just about every category over previous year, and continue to be very strong, and in spite of that, our finances, our revenues are down, so it's harder and harder to, to really make a dollar in healthcare. Healthcare is certainly hard and challenging. Some of our loss leaders happen to be obstetrics, so just spend a while on talking about obstetrics, I just read that, you know, nationally, some other facilities have stopped performing obstetric services, and one was a community of about thirty-five thousand. You know, and it's like, wow, that's pretty scary, the only place that delivered in that community. We have no intention of stopping obstetric services. We have a great medical staff, as you know, we have physicians who are really good at providing obstetric services, and certainly from a community standpoint, we wanna continue that, that's really our future, and we know that, so, our numbers are up, they're strong, and that's a good thing, so we'll continue that service, we just talked about that a little bit before the meeting began. A couple of key things, Senior Life Solutions, Senior Life Solutions is an intensive outpatient behavioral health service, and it's specifically for patients on traditional Medicare. So it's a Medicare-only service for patients on traditional Medicare, not the Medicare Advantage plans. But it will provide intensive outpatient psychiatric or behavioral health services. This is a very significant need in our community, and something we'll be starting, working in partnership with the company, uh, psychiatric here. They're the same company that you contract with to provide mental health services for patients that are emergency dependent through telemedicine, so that'll be an important service to begin, and we'll get that up and running, we're targeting a June start for that. So the company is currently, um, seeking applicants for the three positions that that would be like. But that'll be housed in the old medical records department at the hospital on the first floor of the hospital, so.
So twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, not the medical records department, but conference room E and F on the first floor of the hospital.
So that twenty-four seven telephone line then too?
No, no, the telephone line is still, you know, through the emergency department, through telehealth, should patients present there, but this is, um, stayside hours, and it includes individual and group therapy sessions. Individual counseling and group therapy. So it has been proven to reduce, um, patients presenting to the emergency room after hours, so giving them a level of support that they need. So that'll be an important thing for us to get up and running. The other one that we have is a joint venture for D M E or durable, durable medical equipment, and that's a joint venture with Mercy and Mason City. We'll be opening a home therapy shop at Cassuth Regional Health Center. If you recall, Menola Medical used to have a presence here in town, and then that was bought out by Aro Care, and then Aro Care closed. And it, we haven't had a local presence for that for a while, so we're finding that patients are really struggling to get what they need. So it'll be an important service to be able to offer, we're hoping to have that operational in July of this year, and that will be in the old medical records department at the hospital on first floor, so we're pretty excited to get that going. Peter Jorgensen, we've talked about Peter in the past, Peter joined our team the first of January. He's now licensed and fully credentialed and seeing patients, so I'm sure that his patient load will be quite significant. And he's seen behavioral health, mental health patients in particular, that's his area of specialty as a nurse practitioner. So we're excited to have him join our team and.
And newly married?
Hmm?
And newly married.
And newly married, absolutely, so we're, we're very excited to have him join our team. And it's always nice to keep our, our young professionals right here in Algonquin.
Yeah, he was a classmate of mine.
Was he?
Okay.
Very good.
Oh.
In the Doctor's Day, we celebrated Doctor's Day with our physicians, Doctor's Day was on March thirtieth. We actually celebrated with a hot breakfast on the thirty-first, so they ordinarily get together every Friday morning, so we were able to recognize them for that, but as you know, we have a good lineup of physicians here at Cassuth Regional Health Center, we're, we're proud of them all. In twenty-twenty-four, Cassuth Regional Health Center will be celebrating our twenty, our seventy-fifth anniversary. So we're looking for a way to celebrate that, just starting to think about it now, starting, starting to plan for it, but at least we're aware of it. So the seventy-fifth anniversary is a pretty big deal for a hospital in this day and age. And the foundation is working on completion of the heritage room with some staff and volunteer work, getting that up and running. But that's really going to be a pictorial walk with some product available of the history of Cassuth Regional Health Center, starting out with St. Anne's Hospital, becoming Cassuth County Hospital, so that'll be an important thing.
That's what I ask, is it seventy-five years since St. Anne's or, or including St. Anne's?
Including St. Anne's, yeah, we became part of the county back in the nineteen-seventies.
Okay.
Before that, down the street here?
Hmm.
Down the street, that old?
Was it on Wall Street?
Well, it, it was on several, so there were several locations historically, but the cornerstone for the current location, that's the seventy-five years.
Okay.
So, yeah, great questions. And that is all I have, other than we're preparing for Daisy Award, which is each year we recognize one nurse, um, as the winner of the Daisy Award, and those awards are really blindly chosen by the Board of Trustees. Meaning we blind all of the applications and they select the, the winner, but we have such a good lineup of nominees this year, which is awesome to see. And then that'll be part of our hospital, we get to the eastern end. What questions do you have for me?
Good luck at getting margins back.
I know, I know, and they'll, they'll come probably, it's hard, it's very hard, so I think that we're one of the hospitals that honestly, uh, historically do quite well. And, and when we're struggling, that means that everybody across the state is really struggling, so.
Yeah, on the PowerPoint, the labor compensation page, we, you were kinda in that sixty range, dropped to fifty-five in January, and then up to sixty-nine point four percent in February, what was the, was there a major shift there?
Yes, actually, we anticipated providing a, um, we bonus our staff based on our metrics, and we failed to meet our metrics this last fifteen years, so we allocated funding to meet the metrics, but didn't meet it, and that affects that number, so.
Okay.
And we're just getting a couple of key positions filled, I know we're looking for another occupational therapist. Either an occupational therapist or a certified occupational therapy assistant. I believe we've just been successful in getting a speech pathologist, an additional one hired, so it was a really important person to keep after programs, as well as elderly programs that we offer, so hopefully we should be able to get key positions filled.
Talking about passing?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, have a great day.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll congratulate.
Yes, thank you.
Have a little pearl.
What did you say her name? Yeah, it's adorable.
Yes, have a great day.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There was, um, one handwritten claim in your packets, we actually have three, and I'm passing down the other two. If you have questions, I can explain what those are.
Yeah, what's this stuff for the postage machine?
Okay, so the, um, the postage machine, for some reason this year, we've gone over what we usually do. So how the postage machine works is we usually, it's prepaid, so the company who puts a certain amount on our postage machine, we've already gone over that, so we need to add more money to the postage machine in order to finish up this year. The other one to the postmaster is, so Secretary of State's office sales sends out, um, no activity cards for those holders that didn't vote in the last election. We just put money on it in February, but we have more, the post office has let us know, which is a good thing, which means more people are sending back the no activity cards, cause what, how it works is, um, we put, give so much money to the post office, and then those, on their, um, postcards, it says no postage needed, and so those, they keep track of that at the post office, and then we have to pay it, so we have more, which is a good thing, which means more people are, are sending back those cards, um, but we need more money.
Yeah.
And that accounts.
Being that, um, we only had handwritten claim, and we had one in, in the pack, I mean, is that okay to?
As long as it, the handwritten claim is on there, we can approve the other.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was.
We had handwritten claim on the agenda, so we can add to it.
Okay, okay, it wasn't specific to one item?
No, if, if it would have listed what that was, then we would.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, thank you.
But that's similar to the EMS board members, where it said member versus S, and if you're, if you're reasonably informing the public of the topic to be discussed, then it should comply, um, that's probably the simplest way to summarize.
Yeah.
I would say.
So the first one is the Broward County Sheriff for fifty dollars handwritten claim.
And we're doing separate motions for every?
Separate on all three.
Okay, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for that one.
Stecker?
Second one.
Carter, any questions on it? Any comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. The next one is for three hundred dollars to the US Postmaster, uh, explanation has been given to you, is there any questions? Hearing none, who would like to make the motion in favor?
So moved?
Jack?
I'll second.
Stecker, any questions or any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
That might have slipped out there, Josh.
If you can sign it on the way back, I'll stamp it when it gets here. And the last one is for the five hundred dollars for the reserve account for the postage machine.
Five thousand, five thousand.
Five thousand, I'm sorry, and then we had an explanation on it, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Moved by Wacker, second by Stecker, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried unanimous.
That was a new pronunciation of my last name.
Whacker?
Whacker, it's Whacker. Wow, you remember, uh, what was that one movie they had? Animal House? There was a Whacker in Animal House.
I haven't seen that movie in ages.
That's before your day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had it on DVD, want to play it.
Some names are hard to say, and Josh's is one of them.
Yeah.
It did a German pronunciation of it.
If I read it, I can pronounce it right.
Roger would probably be more comfortable with that. Did you hear the German version?
All right.
Vesta?
Vesta?
You can pronounce that instead if you want.
See, I would never ever have gotten that.
I would neither, when I was, uh, um, on my way back from Afghanistan, we laid over in Germany and, and I went and talked to some of the, um, cause they had like the gift shops there, so I talked to some of the employees and and asked them how my name is actually pronounced, because I knew it was German, and they said Vesta. I said, oh, that's interesting.
That is interesting.
Makes sense, because W is, W is V.
V, yep.
Yep.
Um, I also found it kinda ironic, because the name is actually pretty common in the western part of Germany, and it was, uh, and it stood for guard, like a security guard. I was in the National Guard. So it, it kinda, yeah, it kinda fit.
My maiden name is Jaeger, spelled with a J, which means Hunter in German, and one of my cousin's son's first name is Hunter, so my husband loves to give them crap, you named your son Hunter Hunter, but.
That sounds like good to you.
Yeah.
So you've been on Gutzlanger, the western part of Germany.
I don't know what that means.
Gutzlanger, that means you come from the Lowland.
Oh, yeah.
Well, let's go back to English.
Back to English? Yeah, but he didn't open it, oh, God, it's probably.
Try again?
You could talk German real well.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. Approved liquor license for River Road Golf Club. Flat moves, I'll second that one. Any discussion on the permit? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Everybody take a minute to look at the transfers that are in your folder.
Aprils are always big because of taxes that we just got, so.
Any questions on the transfers? Let the record show that we acknowledge the transfers that were made. Twenty-eighty agreement for sharing of mental health advocate costs with Winnebago and North Counties.
I'll make that motion to approve, twenty-eighty agreement.
I'll second.
Carter and Stecker? Uh, any que- Carter and Stecker, uh, any questions, any comments, Carter?
We have, we've approved it in the, uh.
At the meeting?
Carter, was there any, um, conversation as far as days that she would be here? Or is it all depending on, um?
I don't think there's specific days or hours that she's gonna be in.
On demand.
Cause she serves, she also serves Hancock County.
Yep.
There's four, four counties that she kinda takes care of.
I figured it was as needed. I just thought I'd double check on that. I didn't know if there's any.
No, I don't think she has a specific office hours or anything down there.
She does have an office.
She doesn't, but I'm saying like, there's not a set day that she's here, yeah.
But we didn't maintain an office yet here.
Yeah, they'll, they'll need office space in the agreement, um, but it, it said it was, um, uh, where is that even?
We have the office space.
We have a couple of office spaces over there.
We have the office space that they use before, so.
Yeah, that didn't get used for something else?
No.
I was, yeah, I was understanding, understanding that the office is still available.
Yeah, we, we left it open, cause we know, knew we had to get.
Right, right, yep.
So, I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the twenty eighteen. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried unanimous. Cell phone policy.
I don't know. Do you, do we need to get the other department heads in here, do you think? We talked, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, um. Josh, would you mind calling Todd and see if he wants to come up for the cell phone policy? I believe he is.
One forty-one.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, guys. Hey, Todd, this is Boardroom. We're onto the cell phone policy, if you wanna come up or not, so.
They can carry a workman. They're not, they don't have it.
Okay, so you talked about it at the Department Head Meeting and this is what your suggestion is to the board?
This is, yes, if you're looking for Roger, it's four to one.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about it and, um, decided to take up Doug's policy that he has for secondary road. And we just, um, amended it so that it fits for the whole county. And we came to a consensus that, um.
Hey, this is Boardroom. We're onto the, um, cell phone policy, if you wanna come over. Okay, no worries. Okay, perfect, thanks, bye.
But either okay with some people having county-owned phones and those that don't, um, would, would be reimbursed, um, twenty-five dollars. Sorry, Todd.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Would be reimbursed twenty-five dollars per month for the use of their own personal phone. Um, the only difference that I have is that, um.
You can't hide back there.
Is, um, the mental health advocates is different, but I think hers is done through Care Connection, so. And hers is forty dollars a month, so hers is a little bit different. But otherwise, all other county employees would be twenty-five dollars a month. Um, and I, I think we all agreed in the Department Head Meeting that that's what we would suggest to you today. The copy of the policy is in care holders.
And this is just for those that are required to have cell phone?
The policy addresses those that have county phones and those that will be reimbursed at twenty-five dollars. And it's not changing any of the existing, it's not adding any phones or changing anything. Um, Todd is gonna update his, he will follow this policy. His is a little different right now. Otherwise, I think it's, everybody else will be continuing doing the same thing, except for reimbursement will be twenty-five dollars a month.
Wasn't Doug's a little bit lower before?
His was, his was lower. It's at fifteen now. Um, one thing for the policy side of it, it's like, it has each department head shall determine which positions require the use of a phone. Um, when we were having the discussions about COVID and policy within the courthouse, there were some differences between department heads on how that was handled. I don't, I don't know if we need to have more clarification on that here, so that it's, uh, across the board standard for that or not, but. That's one thing I think we should consider, so that there's not a variation.
Can you clarify that? I don't remember that.
Well, I probably won't get into specific situations, but there was, the policy was handled a little differently.
By different department heads, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that was the point of what I was saying.
For some.
But, my guess.
No, not for cell phones. No, just policy in general, I see, yeah.
I think it's kinda clear that it'll be up to the department head to determine if they need a reimbursement or not. I don't see anything wrong with the policy. Is anybody? It standardized it.
And as long as no one's getting more than another person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's fine, yeah.
Do I have somebody to make the motion on cell phone policy?
I'll make the motion.
Carter, second?
I'll second.
Whacker, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carried unanimous. Thank you, guys.
I'll get you guys a holo copy of that.
Doug, we're up to our favorite portion of the day.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, this'll take at least an hour. I don't know if you would like me to wait in, as far as the budgeted program, um, and, and finish other things? Or how you wanna handle it?
Uh, Judy said, Judy wanna do yours quick?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Yeah, Judy did.
Oh, she don't have any? No, I guess she don't. We're pretty much.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I said, might as well do it now, I.
Yeah.
Is it okay if we do the budget and then the other stuff maybe come later?
However you guys wanna do it.
Well, we got about an hour before we do the Snyder, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, why don't we do yours and then?
Go back.
Yeah. We'll go back and get caught up after Snyder then.
Folder, there should be, uh, I believe four files.
There's seven files.
Well, four files with the budget program. Uh, one that says, uh, final program, uh, final budget, a motion to approve, uh, the secondary road two thousand four. Budget program and a presentation. So, I'm gonna go through the presentation right now, and if you guys would like, uh, you can follow along on your, your own notebooks.
Yeah, that's, that's your.
Yeah, okay, so. Uh, this is a budget program, so, uh, our budget, uh, goes to the Department of Transportation. It's the same numbers as what is in the Cassius County budget. But they, they do have some separate rules, uh, that road departments are required to follow as compared to rules that the county follows. Uh, when you have a five-year secondary road plan, uh, first start in the budget, uh, the numbers on the right would, uh, start out, uh, the numbers to the left are prior here. We're starting out with an estimated balance of five million one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars. We expect receipts for property taxes to be two million one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ten dollars. Local option sales tax, six hundred thousand dollars. Regular road use tax that we estimate to receive is six million one hundred forty-six thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars. Uh, the transfer of jurisdiction and farm market, uh, extensions in cities. We are expecting fifty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-seven da, uh, dollars for that. Time twenty-one funds, seven hundred fifty thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars. And then the miscellaneous, uh, land drainage district repair sale of fuel to other government entities, driveway construction, other miscellaneous. Uh, that ends up being approximately two hundred ninety thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. So, our total receipts, total funds available are fifteen million one hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-nine.
Doug, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
I, can you remind me, what is time twenty-one?
Time twenty-one is some, uh, funds that were created, um, I think it was around two thousand fourteen. Had to do with, uh, increasing in some registration, uh, registration of vehicles, some driver's license. So, there were some funds that were made available after a certain, those are, those funds were originally disturbed, distributed amongst a, a formula. But after so many millions of dollars were created, then it gets distributed under the regular road use tax. So, when it started, we were not getting as much as what we, uh, are getting now, uh, as things have increased. And we're, the DOT is receiving more for those dollars. Part of it is some of the transfer jurisdictions that. I think Western County, more or less, it wasn't a choice to counties to whether or not they wanted a transfer of jurisdiction, Highway twenty. Uh, when they moved to Four Lane and moved Highway twenty a mile south, counties were forced to take over roads. And part of the legislation was compensation for those counties up there. So, now, some of that transfer of jurisdiction is completed, so.
I'll talk.
Sure. So, for expenditures, we got nine hundred sixteen thousand engineering administration, two and a half million dollars budgeted for construction. Five million five hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred ten dollars in maintenance of roads. Uh, general roadway, three million eight hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred fifty. So, our total expenditures are twelve million nine hundred two, estimated to be twelve million nine hundred two thousand seven hundred sixty-two. And that, if we would spend all that money and the revenues would come in the way we have them estimated, we would end up with a balance of two million two hundred ninety-six thousand seventy-seven dollars. Our five-year program for construction, accomplishment year twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which will begin July one of twenty twenty-three. These would be projects that we plan to let in that time period. Uh, first thing that I wanna say is, the first two, three years of this program are, I've got a lot of projects in there and I just, I don't, I put them in there, but I don't know if we'll have the funds to do them. And resurfacing, uh, for example, this year, we had to take two projects out of this year's work because we did not have enough money to do all the resurfacing. And I would expect that the very same, same thing with this resurfacing would, uh, would happen. But we, beginning with, uh, farm market, using farm market funds, uh, going east and a little bit north out of Lead Yard. Uh, farm market funds, we'll estimate this to be six hundred fifty thousand dollars. We got another farm market project, A sixteen. Uh, this, this road in particular is in poorer condition than the road going east and north out of Lead Yard. But, uh, this would be A sixteen, um, running from the West County line and east over to Highway one sixty-nine. And we have three point eight million dollars of farm market funds there. Then, using some local funds, we have a three-mile project, uh, running from A twenty-one to A sixteen. This would be on P forty. And then also using three, uh, local funds. Uh, this is A twenty-one, running from P fifty and then east four miles over to Highway one sixty-nine. And seven hundred fifty dollars, or seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of local funds there. Uh, we have a federal bridge project on the Bold Hobarton Road. Uh, this is a, currently a single-span steel I-beam. It was constructed in the sixties. Um, the deck, we are seeing some condition rating, I think it's four on that. And a condition rating on the substructure is four, so we are starting to see how that, uh, bridge is starting to, uh, see the end of its life, so we are planning to replace that. That would be using far, uh, federal bridge replacement funds. And, uh, we leave it, our twenty percent match on those with swap money. And then we have a BRS one ninety-nine, this is just north of the bridge. It's, we got a bridge right here that is under contract and will be started soon. But, uh, this is on P sixty-four, running from Highway eighteen up to Taithanka. Replace this bridge, we estimate five hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal aid swap funds on that. There's some photos of that. One of the abutments showing somewhere, uh, again, the deck showing some leachy coming through there. Uh, fifty-seven twenty-six oh four is a timber bridge down on the west side of, uh, section twenty-six of Prairie. Uh, Dana Armendorfer lives right north of that, um. This is four hundred thousand dollars, what we would anticipate to be four hundred thousand dollars of local funds. Timber structure, timber piling, timber abutment. And then fifty-seven thirty-four oh eight is just around the corner, south and west. George Gunter lives right to the west of that bridge, and that's four hundred thousand dollars of local funds. Uh, what we estimate to replace that, uh, timber structure, a couple of pictures there of that. Uh, this one actually, excuse me, it's a different one, right in that area. And then we have, to finish out this fiscal year, is the bridge up at Michelson Marsh. Um, we, on the south side of that, the gentleman has, uh, his land enrolled in a USDA conservation type program. We are getting a report to them and hopefully we'll be able to purchase road right away and get that. That is a five hundred thousand dollar total project is what we estimate. Part of that would be using increment financing and part of it would be using local funds. There's some photographs of that, uh, it's been widened, concrete cap, and there's steel cap there. Continuous I-beam, uh, high timber and timber piling, high timber abutments. That's one of the abutment pile. You can see a screwdriver there. Not a lot of section left in that, uh, pile there, so. Uh, the first priority year, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, that will begin in July of twenty twenty-four. Uh, start off with some resurfacing, uh, B fifty-five, call it, I call it the Irvington Blacktop. We, uh, would be resurfacing that from Highway one sixty-nine east over to the, uh, Sexton-Laverne Road, seven miles. Uh, this is a federal aid, uh, road, so we would be using, uh, one point nine million. It's estimated one point nine million. Eight percent of that would be federal aid and the remainder would be farm market. And then we would be doing, uh, the Bold Hobarton Road, P thirty. Uh, got a bridge that we're replacing hopefully this year, then we can resurface the road. That's, uh, estimated one point six million. I think we got one million three hundred sixty thousand of, uh, federal aid on that. And the remainder. And the remainder, or excuse me, that's all FM, I'm sitting on a different road. That'd be all using farm market funds. Again, I added these here into this year, but in order to get it accomplished, I do not know. We've got a farm market road, this would be right on the north side of Smith Lake and running west of one sixty-nine over to highway fifteen. Estimate that at two point one million dollars. Transfer station road using farm market funds, five-mile road there from P forty-four, between P forty-four and, or it's on P forty-four, running from B thirty to B nineteen, estimated at one point one million dollar farm market. And then a small one and a half mile using local funds, this would be from one sixty-nine over to that P forty-four. Job that we were just talking about, three hundred fifty thousand dollars of local funds there. Structures forty-seven oh five eighty, this is kind of following up and finishing up. The timber bridge is down in that area. We have a timber bridge, north line of section five, the Laverne Township, using four hundred fifty thousand dollars of local funds. Again, another timber bridge with some timber piling, high timber abutments. This one, we actually had a failure on the, this would be the upstream side, the north side. Those piling, it was during an ice event where those failed. So we drove some steel piling, put a steel cap on there to support that north end of that bridge. And then we have some timber bridges down by where Mike Colehouse lives, this is on the west line of section seventeen. Estimate four hundred thousand dollars of local funds for this bridge. Another timber bridge, timber, high timber abutments. The backy plank, we're not quite put in low enough there. And this is on a skew and that water during high-water events hits that south, up at the southeast side and causes some problems there. We may end up, the, these bridges are posted now, however, given some of the funding, we may end up having to just do more maintenance than construction on this. And right down the road, that creek runs southeast and then turns back southwest, so forty-nine seventeen oh six. There's, the forty-seven seventeen oh two, the creek runs over to the east side and then goes back west. That same bridge, same problems. We've got another timber bridge, they were built at the same time, same contractor, same contract.
None of these are box culvert material?
Uh, this is a pretty good-sized drainage district there, so we will look into it to see what kind of flows are in there. But right now, I, I don't know, I would assume it's going to be a bridge. If you go back, that's a bridge there, that's a bridge there. I believe that's a bridge. I know that's a bridge there on the E road.
You've got fall in that part of the county?
Well, I mean, there's a pretty good drainage area that goes all the way up to north, I think it goes north of highway eighteen there, so. But we will look into that. Local bridge, this is up by Michelson Marsh, but it's right around the corner, the Michelson Marsh Bridge is right here. Same style of bridge, right around the corner on, I think that's P. That's P sixty-four, P sixty. It is urban renewal eligible, we could use some TIF funds if, if they're available. This is an I-beam bridge. We've got timber piling with a concrete cap in the middle of it. Seen some things in the cap, in the abutment substructure on that. And then we got eighty-eight fourteen fifty, local funds, four hundred thousand dollars. This is on the north side of the Union Slough outlet. This is posted for single truck traffic, it's got a little bit of an alignment problem. But it's a single-span concrete cap, but timber abutments underneath it, high-tempered. Again, they tried to do a little bit of work in here to keep some of that problems underneath of there. But the approaches end up during wa, high-water events have some problems. And then eighty-nine thirty oh six, this is right north of Lone Rock on P thirty. Right now, we have a metal pipe there, replace that with a box culvert. We've got some problems here showing a little bit of deflection in there. We got a structure actually inside of the culvert holding things up. It's been this way for a long time, but that's not going to last forever.
I think it's unique.
Well, you'll see the, you'll see another project here where we have another support in the middle of one of those big pipes. The second priority year, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, this will begin in the, in July one of twenty twenty-five. Resurfacing, we have federally funded resurfacing on the Bancroft Forest City Road, A forty-two. This would be running from highway one sixty-nine over to P sixty-four. One point seven miles of farm market and federal aid, STP block grant funds on that. Then we have north of A forty-two on R fourteen. The first one is R fourteen, north of A forty-two, between nine and A forty-two. That is a job that in the seventies recycled asphalt and one of those that we see the large contraction, expansion cracking on that. So we would do a cold-in-place recycling along with HMA resurfacing over that. Estimate one point nine farm market funds. We've got a farm market road or plan of resurfacing using farm market funds, excuse me, local funds, I didn't share that. Three miles from P sixty-six over to R fourteen, estimate that at five hundred fifty thousand dollars local funds. And then another local funded job, this would be on three miles north between B fourteen and A forty-two on R fourteen, five hundred fifty thousand dollars of local funds. We have a bridge down section two of Forty-Eight Sherman, P S, two hundred thousand dollars. This would be, I, I believe a box culvert, replace that, high-tempered abutments with a steel I-beam. That's posted, posted bridge. Fifty-nine twenty oh three, Harold Bosworth, used to live right around, right in this area. And Tilges, can't think of his first name right now, lives right to the south there. This would be replacing a timber bridge with a concrete slab. We have a concrete slab right here, we have a concrete slab right here. This bridge is posted during high-water events, we actually have water going over that road. We do some grading on that and try to keep that road so it is usable by all traffic, north and south. We have a bridge, this is north of Central School, this would be replacing a timber structure with a concrete slab bridge. Low estimate on that, I think that it's going to take more, but we do, it's in the future there. Three-span timber bridge, timber deck, timber vents and abutments. Eighty-seven oh nine sixty is a bridge, north line, actually this is a culvert, north line of section nine in German Township. Got some cuts in there, causes a few little deflections. Possibly, it's in, it's in our program, we'll see how, how we move it forward. And then eighty-eight twenty-three fifty, that's a bridge, it's in the middle of the slough. I keep on pushing this one back, it's kind of in the middle of the program, but I go back a year. The slough no longer tries to control any kind of a pool elevation on the south side of that. But at one time we talked that we were going to put something in there, now the slough does not. However, we also continue to push this bridge back, so whether it gets replaced or not, we will see. We are seeing some problems in the deck.
That road could almost get closed in some ways.
Yes, that, that's possible. It is on a snow removal route, so it's not a high priority for the road department, but we do have it in the middle. Third priority year, fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, I was having some problems with the computer application getting this, but we do not have as many projects as what it'll have in the next few years as we continue to move forward. Farm market resurfacing, three miles right to the west of Taithanka. This is P sixty-six, actually, this was part of our current program, our current fiscal year that I had to bump a road down in order to make everything work. But I have estimated five hundred sixty thousand farm market funds on that. This is a TIF increment financing project that is eligible. With the Gold Eagle increment financing, three miles on that, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then we have a little road, one mile, there's a church right up here in Hancock County. This would be a project that would be shared, half Hancock and half Cassou. The infrastructures, we've got a bridge right out to the west of Algonah, replacing the existing bridge, high-tempered abutments. This one would probably be a culvert, we have an L B as a bridge. But I think if you go up to McGregor, there's a box culvert there underneath highway eighteen is a culvert. I believe we could probably get a culvert in here as well. Got some problems with some piling underneath there. Sixty-seven eighteen oh six is right north of Sexton on P sixty. This is a concrete slab, it's been widened, and I think in the early nineties, we actually widened it. And we are seeing on the original structure, some substructure problems. We've got a little grading project, this has been in the program for a long time. Actually, this has been in the program when the ethanol plant was constructed. Some of the people that haul grain to the ethanol plant asked that we grade this road so that they would not have to go through Lead Yard, grade and pave. I have it in our fourth year, I've kept it in our fourth year for quite a while. Whether that gets done or not, it's not a high priority of mine, I guess. If the board has feelings for that, you're going to have to let me know. And then we have a grading project called the Bancroft Bypass, this half-mile stretch of road. We have tried dealing with the landowner, however, it's difficult. We're finding it's difficult to get road right away for this. The grading project is easy, getting the road right away for that is difficult. I've pushed that down on my priority list. Again, if the board feels this is a priority, please let me know. And then the final year of the program, using some farm market funds, this would be the Bancroft Forest City Road running up to Sway City. P thirty, estimate of one million dollars of farm market funds. P sixty-six, north of highway nine, one million dollars of local funds. Got that with the local project. Then B fourteen, this is another road, the board at one time talked about extending. B fourteen, this road is all graded, it's all ready to be resurfaced, repaved. It never had pavement, but I've always kept it in the fifth year. It's not a high priority, I'd rather take care of our roads that we have now that are surfaced than add on to them. But I would estimate almost a million dollars farm market funds on that.
Is that crooked yet, as the picture shows?
Yeah, it's, it's got deflections in there. Yes, it is. And then the paving, this would be the Lead Yard Bypass, finishing up with the paving on that. Obviously, we're not going to pave it until it's created, so. Then we have a bridge down by Mrs. Kirsh. Bob, Mrs. Bob Kirsh, it's on the west line, thirty-two ninety-four twenty-nine. Another timber bridge, we've seen some, actually stringers have failed on this with some very heavy loads. Again, we have some backy plank that are suffering there. And then we have some small bridges, this is on north line of section four of Garfield Township. Small bridge, it could be replaced with some precast sections very easily. We've taken most of these types of structures off and paved roads, but some gravel roads would be good to do that at some time. Would help our man with maintenance of gravel roads quite a bit, snow removal, different things. Another small bridge replaced with some precast sections. Bridges themselves are fairly good, but these curbs are difficult on equipment, road equipment, agriculture equipment. I think they got about twenty-two, twenty-four foot width on them. This is another one of those small bridges that could be replaced with some pipe. People wouldn't even know that the structure was in there. This is a small pipe north of Jim Grand Janets. It's on, it's on the west line, actually, it's in section seven, the west line of section seven is right here. There's a small stub that Jim Grand Janet. I can't think of the gentleman's name that used to live out there, son is, got a.
Ron Forber.
Ron Forberger, and some, I can't think of his name right now. Anyway, we could replace that, it is a very narrow road top on it, however, all it does, Lloyd Gerber used to live back there. It really just gets back to Lloyd Gerber's old house. Nice house, nice area building site, but it's not the highest priority in rural Dallas. Nine-nine eleven, this is a drainage district private that was cleaned out a few years ago, the culvert's a little high. Would help out the drainage district to get that replaced. Here's a shoring to hold up the culvert there. Zero-eight twenty-one twenty, that's a timber bridge up in Springfield Township, north line of section twenty-one. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars, probably on the light side, but I keep it in the program, keep it listed. It, it, it's getting to the end of life on that. This is a trust bridge, zero-eight, zero-seven oh two. Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, an open ditch, starts right up here. This is one we talked about possibly vacating, it's right on the the center of section or the, yeah, center of section, the center of the road, so. The, excuse me, land on one side of the bridge and land on the other side of the bridge are owned by separate people at this time. So the, excuse me, land on one side of the bridge and land on the other side of the bridge are owned by separate people at this time. So if we could possibly vacate that road, that, that would be a thing. We do see some cracking in the abutments, some substructure problems there. Nine-zero, twenty-four oh one, this is a bridge, if possibly we could overlay, we got some steel. The cover must not have been very good on that, we've seen some reflection. However, we're not seeing steel, so steel is doing its job there. And that's more for shrinkage and crack, shrinking and cracking. Grading, these are some projects that have been in the program for a long time. This used to be the Furch Peter Road. This is a very, very difficult road to maintain during snow removal. If we did some grading, lift that road up, we can help ourselves out quite a bit. Henry used to live in that area, Dolores Tilges, if you're familiar, lives right on the pavement there. Another grading project, helped get some drainage in this area during very, very wet seasons. This road is, is in poor condition. This two-mile road, Steve Minkie lives on that. There's a burrow that lives up there too, maybe that's his mother-in-law. But anyway, have that grading project. Another grading project, this five-mile stretch, four-and-a-half mile stretch of gravel road sees a lot of traffic with grain deliveries, the ethanol plant is right up here. So a lot of people come from the south. That would be a, a good project to get paved, or excuse me, not paved, get graded. We would have to purchase some road right away to do that and get a good twenty-four-foot top on, on that, twenty-six-foot top. Good drainage in there so that that road would be less maintenance for us. Been in the program since the ethanol plant was in there, started twenty, twenty years ago. And then we got a little project up here. There's a drainage ditch, open ditch that runs on the east side of this gravel road that if we could get some road right away, move that road to the west, it would be more for safety there. It is steep going on the east side, but that would be twenty-five, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars of local funds. So the program totals, you can see for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four coming up, we are estimating two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of swap funds, four million, four hundred and fifty, four million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of farm market funds, two million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of local funds, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars of federal aid, and then three hundred thousand dollars of increment financing special funds. So we have programmed eight million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars of funds for the fiscal year coming up. The following year, nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like I say, some of these dollars are gonna end up going back into the next couple of years as we see what funds are available and what projects need to be done. We're gonna really have to do some discussing, I, I don't know, I, I think bridges, for the most part, probably discuss whether we need to concentrate on bridges that are on paved routes, make sure that we keep those up. Obviously, the resurfacing, we need to make, keep our pavements up, however, every year we fall, fall a little bit more behind. So to ever catch up with it, it is difficult. Gravel road, bridges, yes, are needed, but unless we have the dollars to do it, I don't know how, how, how else. Some budget graphs, our estimated receipts for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year twenty-four. Start off with a balance, we've got a balance of five million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. We're getting six hundred thousand dollars of local option sales tax, road use tax, six million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Almost forty percent of our revenue comes from road use tax. Property tax, two million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten. Short fifteen percent in miscellaneous receipts, one million, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. So total receipts are fifteen million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Our ending balance is estimated at two million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Expenditures on administration and engineering, nine hundred and sixteen thousand. Construction, two and a half million. Roadway maintenance, five million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ten. And then general roadway is three million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty. Total expenditures equal total receipts. If you also throw in the expenditures and just look at it without the ending balance, so these would be the actual dollars that get spent, that ends up being twelve million, nine hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two. Construction is almost twenty percent of that, roadway maintenance, forty-three point four. Engineering, five point six, administration, one point five, and general roadway, thirty point two.
Doug, what's the difference between roadway maintenance and general roadway?
Roadway maintenance are dollars that we actually gravel, labor to maintain. Culverts, labor to put culverts. Roadway, general roadway is fuel, equipment, equipment operations, mechanic shop, electricity, phones, those types of things.
Thank you.
So the roadway maintenance includes all the wages for the workers?
Yes, except for the mechanics.
Except for the mechanic shop, okay.
If you add in our federal aid and our farm and market projects, which are not part of the local budget, we have, and special funds, the increment financing, we have one point five million dollars of extra construction. If you put that in, construction ends up being twenty-eight point two percent. Engineering is five percent, administration, one point three. Roadway maintenance, twenty-six point six, and then the general roadway is twenty-six point nine. It, it seems, we, we try to, or we attempt, it's good to see construction, roadway maintenance about equal there. Means we're putting good dollars into good, long-lasting projects and not just maintaining a lot of things. So that's the project there, or program. I do have a motion prepared, and it's in the electronic folder just to approve and adopt the Kasuth County Secondary Road Department fiscal year twenty-four budget and five-year construction program and to recommend approval to the Iowa Department of-
Find the motion in their folder, dated April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. To approve and adopt Kasuth County Secondary Road Department fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget and five-year construction program and recommendations approved by the Iowa Department of Transportation is the motion. Do I have somebody that would like to make that motion? Jack Plack makes the motion, do I have second?
Second.
Second by Carter, any discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Plack?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
All right, now I just need to get some signatures. So I give these two to you, Tammy, the auditors on the top. And if you would, Roger, same thing, you're on the bottom line, right below my signature. And then have Tammy sign those, Tammy, you can keep one, and I'll keep the other. And I will get that electronically submitted to the DOT, thank you.
Feel free.
Thank you. There you go.
Might be able to keep the other time.
Anything else on the budget, Doug?
Uh, no.
Do we have a few minutes yet before nine-thirty, should we approve the gravel pit lease?
Sure, I think that that lease, I realize it was not in your folder this morning, but this is a lease with Shane Kogle for what we call cylinder gravel pit. And I believe that map is, is there, it's-
Fifteen and a half acres.
Yeah, it, it's a small-
Section nineteen Fairfield Township.
Right. And this is one that built the Pew farm, but Bill has retired, and we did take bids on this, if the board remembers. I don't remember the exact date, but Shane had the high bid to farm that, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the lease for the gravel pit? In section nineteen of Fairfield Township.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, do I have second? Second by Carter, any discussion on the lease? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Okay, both Roger and Tammy to sign that, please, and I will motorize that. Thank you.
You wanted it right away, nothing to discuss.
So I'm doing it all. We have on our agenda for discussion for the mechanic position. Mr. Stecker, you put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, and it can kind of tie in with discussion with the engineer, but I was curious about an update, have we gotten any applications, what's the status on that?
We've received some applications, however, they are lacking experience. And any experience I have is on small equipment, not really what we are looking for.
Okay.
Let the record show that we discussed mechanic position.
Do you, do you feel the wage needs to be higher? I mean, we, we made an increase during the negotiations process and stuff this year, but-
I think Vanderhage's advertising salary is seventy-seven thousand to ninety-five thousand. There's a place in Hampton, I saw an advertisement. I think that was again seventy-five thousand starting wage. I, I don't know.
For Kasuth County, are we comparable as far as how comparable are we compared to implement dealers and?
I, I have a call, but I, they don't publicize what they're paying. I, I heard, this is secondhand, this is all hearsay. I've heard that there's a person that retired from an implement dealership in Kasuth County, and he was compensated more than what the road department wants, let's put it that way. Having said that, I don't believe, I believe that everyone is having a difficult time hiring mechanics at this time. Diesel-heavy equipment mechanics. And if they do have mechanics, I believe that they are making sure that they keep them.
With the union negotiations we had, if we were to make a change to that wage, do we need to go through that process again or involve the union? Believe we-
Yeah, I think you need to talk to, my answer is yes, but I'm not an attorney, I'm not a labor expert. But I think you'd want to talk with Renee Von Volker.
Our, yeah, our labor attorney that we've been using.
Yeah.
Because you, you mess with the union and they're not gonna be happy with us.
I was, I was thinking that was the process that was needed.
Anything else, if not, construction and the right away, we can get that done quick?
Uh, we do have a request for construction of the road right away, this is from Midland Powder. There are actually two locations. One of them is between section one and section twelve of Wesson Township, where they are, I think they're reconstructing some overhead lines, rebuilding some overhead lines to get three-phase to a farm building site, Great McNeese. And then in Buffalo, between section twenty-six and twenty-seven, the same thing. I believe that they are rebuilding to get three-phase to Garrett Suture. But I would recommend that the board would approve both of these, they're on the same motion. So permits are four, seven, twenty-twenty-three, and four, eight, twenty-twenty-four.
I would move to approve the construction on the road right away, do I have second? Second by Stecker, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Doug, Jerks and Stecker.
Yes, thank you.
Long as we have you here, do you have any discussion?
Uh, I got a couple of things in it. One is Eightieth Avenue, maybe Ninetieth Avenue, north of Roger Churlin. I think Doug Crouch last week mentioned that there was a tile where a road collapsed. We did find that a utility fiber optic ore went through that, so that has been closed until the fiber optic ore is removed or replaced, which is supposed to happen Thursday.
After that's done, do you have any idea on timeline or to get?
Day.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, we'll get it going. Down in Irvington, that bridge there going over the river, a little bit of grading needs to be done. We were outstaking that yesterday. We're hoping in the next couple of weeks we'll have the guardrail on and that bridge project will be complete. Up in Lincoln Township, Marivans are working to replace that bridge up there. They had started, got the piers in, but they have started reconstruction again. The airport expansion project is to be let a week from Friday, April fourteen, no, April twenty-one is due. So we will know more about that road after that letting. Uh, planning and zoning we are meeting on the seventeenth, uh, to approve the recommendations, the report that goes to the board supervisors. So I may put it on the agenda, I probably will put it on the agenda, that the board, um, accept the report from the Planning and Zoning Commission next week.
What time is that? The meeting?
Three o'clock, equals seventeen.
But that'll be a, that's, that's the electronic way?
Yeah, will be, yes, and, um, I don't know if everyone, if all the zoning commission will be in here. We will also be in this road there, so. But if they were in the fields, they can call here. I just anticipate that it's going to be, um-
Looks like this weekend could be wet, so.
Yes. Other than that, that's everything that I have.
Anything else for Doug? No, thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll take a ten-minute break.
Yeah, let's do ten, that's fine. We don't have to do it straight at nine-thirty.
No, we need a break.